Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of your Newark City Council order. Autumn, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Bug.
Here.
Mr. Cos.
Here.
Mrs. Floyd.
Here.
Mr. Fraser.
Here.
Ms. Hall.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Marney.
Someone who's here.
Mr. Raff.
Here.
And Mr. Ralletta.
Here.
Autumn, call Mr. Marney.
Mr. Marney.
Fred.
We have all here present this evening. Next on the agenda is the invocation by Mrs. Floyd, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you please stand.
Point your bow your heads, please. Almighty God, in this Thanksgiving season, we have so much to be thankful for. In this community, we have most of the things that we need. We are so much better off than a good portion of the world, and yet we have people who don't have near what they need, even though they may work hard. There's an awful lot of poverty in our community. There's a lot of homelessness. We ask that you be with us tonight as we make decisions facing the city and that you help us to work with people and help them to meet their needs. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next on the agenda, we have caucus. That's a time for council to discuss anything pertinent to the agenda tonight. Do we have anything? Next, we have the minutes of our November 7, 2016 meeting. Is there a motion to approve that? Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Raff. Calls in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The same sign. That passes. Thank you. We have four reports this evening from standing committees. One from finance, one from service, one from Ways and Means, and one from capital improvement. Without objection, those will be received and filed. No reports this evening from city officials. We have one communication from Laura Hyatt, a letter to council regarding Little Bear and their business trouble due to the downtown construction. Without objection, that will be received and filed. Next on the agenda this evening, we have a public hearing. We're going to go ahead and have Autumn read the public hearing. We'll open the public hearing.
Notice is hereby given that the Newark City Council should take action upon ordinance number 16-33 on November 21, 2016. Said ordinance allows the changing of the zoning classification of certain real property, generally described as parcel two, parcel number 81-305-664-00.003, and parcel three, parcel number 79-295-992-00.024, City of Newark, Ohio, Licking County, from that of single-family light-density district to AD agricultural district.
This is your chance to speak. You've heard the reading of the public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak pro or con? Just wants to come on up and just give us your name and address for the record.
I'm located in this borough, and I live at 360 North Vernon Avenue, which would be right at the corner of North Vernon and Riggs Road. And the property that we're discussing goes in back of my lot. I also border where the drive is between the field and my property, which is also a part of the change. So that's where I live, and I think I moved here in '94, '95. The previous owner had animals on the property as well. And we had a very noisy mule, a little burrow, about five llama, and some horses. And it was very challenging to live with mule because of the baying and so forth that went on. The owner at the time did not manage, was not a good farm manager, and a lot of waste was not handled properly from the animals. It was, the animals were kept in the barn, and when it was cleaned, it was shoved out into a corral and piled up. When it was taken out, it was loaded on a wagon, down the drive, and then dumped in a pile in the back, creating a lot of flies, a lot of smell, a lot of things that were not done correctly. The new owners have sheep and a few horses back there. And the sheep and the horses do not bother me. They do not make a lot of noise. I feel that the waste is being handled properly where it's being spread rather than just piled up. So I just wanted it on the record to be known that I really was not opposed to this change in zoning. I believe that the people who own the property intend to keep it like that. If it was going to a confinement situation where it was chicken confinement, or like veal calf confinement, or hog confinement, or something like that, I would be opposed. But the way that it is now, I believe that these people are handling it correctly. And, you know, for the future of the property, I would hope that it would stay maintained as it is now. And it's nice pasture for them, and I just wanted that to go on the record.
Thank you, ma'am.
So thank you.
Thank you. Autumn, would you read what the planning commission suggested for this?
Yes. The following actions were recommended for approval. The zoning classification for parcel one at 320 North Vernon Avenue shall remain as RL, single-family residential low-density district without any changes. The zoning classifications for parcel two and parcel three shall be changed as requested and be established as AD agricultural district.
Anyone else like to speak, either for or against?
Hi, my name's Joe Lombardo. I live at 351 North Vernon. Me and my wife and kids moved there about 20 years ago. Nice neighborhood, peaceful and quiet. Until JVS lets out or the kid's speeding up down the road. Anyway, like I said, it's a nice neighborhood. I'd like to keep it the way it is. I don't mind a few animals. If I wanted to live on a farm, I'd have bought a farm somewhere. That was, I don't know if it was residential when we moved there, but, you know, last thing I'd like is see a bunch of animals, the smell. I work out of Brownsville. There's a cow farm and a pig farm down there, and it's terrible. Just want you to know, I'm not bored, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am?
I'm Shannon Gibson. I live at 314 North Vernon. I'm actually neighbor to the property in question, and they're actually in my backyard as well as theirs, and I don't have a problem. I grew up on a farm, and I have actually had interactions with the horses and the sheep that are on the property. And I've been back at the back of the property. I've been in the barns. The place is very well-maintained. As far as noise goes, there's absolutely no problem there. You wouldn't even know they were there, actually, if you didn't have any interaction. So I'm absolutely for it. They maintain the property very well, and I don't see there being a problem in the future. I don't know how it was maintained before, but I don't think we should use that as a judgment right now, so.
Anyone else like to speak for or against? This is your opportunity.
Evening. Fred Collop, I live at 340 North Vernon. My property is just in the back where all their pasture is. I've had to deal with the previous owner pretty deep and heavy. I haven't really got into him, into it with him, about his animals or anything, other than him and his neighbor. He doesn't have a right-of-way to getting them back to the barns. His property line is about that far, about that far over from the right-of-way back to his other barns, so I really don't know how he's going to get there. You don't have an easement signed from the other neighbor when he bought the place. Get around to the back pasture, he'd have to go down through the church. But I've taken pictures of all the property lines. He sent out some letter. I never received it, saying he's surrounded by just hayfields. I mean, not hayfields, but straw fields and cornfields, and that's really not the case. I mean, the church puts up beans and corn. Then on the other side, they put up corn most of the while, but to me, I just like to know what they're going to use it for. I mean, it's always been, in the past, I've had to deal with a lot of flies, and I, the previous owner's on the paddock next to me, he tried to keep them off of there as being kind. These guys got their horses and everything right against my property, and I don't like that. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hang on, ma'am.
I'd just like to speak to that comment. We actually, the piece of property is referring to...
Could you give us your name and address?
I'm sorry. It's Gabriel Yance at 320 North Vernon Avenue. And the two parcels that we're looking at are about 500 feet or so from North Vernon Avenue, and well over, almost 1,500 feet to the back. There's a farm, if you look at the, which probably already have, currently being farmed on this side and also currently being farmed on the other side. But we actually own the road that he's talking about, that the church owns, the church actually does not own. We actually own that, so we have a separate road to access the back part of the property where most of the farming is done, and that's a road we've currently been using. That is the second parcel that you guys are looking at for consideration today to be zoned as ag. And so the right-of-way from our house, that's where we park our trucks, our car, you know, that we drive, that he's talking about, is a shared driveway there. But the access to the farm we own at the corner of Riggs Road and North Vernon Road, we own that road all the way back. That access is the back part of the property, and so I appreciate that, and I'm definitely in favor of the motion.
Thank you. Ma'am, did you want to say anything?
We have the pictures here if you would like to see the pictures of the property.
You want to just hand it to Deanne, she'll pass it.
Thank you.
Is that, is that just like 10 packets of the same thing, or?
Yeah, it's just, you can put, you know, if you're here and there, and just pass it.
You want to make a comment, or no? Anyone else?
I live at 341 North Vernon Avenue. My name's Jerry Ryan. I just wanted to get some clarification to this AD agricultural district paper that I got from here. Okay?
Okay.
It says you can start a church. You can start a cemetery. You can have a campground. You can have a greenhouse. There's a lot of different things it says you can do here. So can you already do that on a property now, the way it is? Or do you have to have this agreement to do this?
Mr. Lot Director, would you like to answer that, or do you want to answer that?
I don't know how these lots are all currently zoned. I think the safety service director would have to answer that.
I believe...
Mr. Marney?
I believe the way that it is is that when the zoning changes came in, this was grandfathered in. It's an acceptable non-deformal use, is the way it is currently.
So it's the way it's currently zoned?
It can be utilized as such as agriculture.
So then this can already be done on the property without getting agricultural?
Yep.
And everything that's happened on the property now can be done without getting an AD?
I believe that's correct.
So I don't understand why we need a property change.
It's coming into the city, correct? Is that why it's already in the city?
It's already in the city.
It's already in the city.
Mr. Moorhead, do you want to help me out? This gentleman has, this is our city engineer. This question is...
And my question was, what's going to change being agricultural district over, not over the way the property is now?
The, he's using, it's being used as an agricultural district now?
Mm-hmm.
And that can continue as long as it's a continuous use. Basically, if he, if the agricultural use stopped, then it would not be able to be continued again in the future. Without, it could be with approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals, but basically, I think his, the owner's thought is that he wants to line it up, line the zoning up with the use that's going on now as a legal use. So if he wanted to build an additional barn in the back, he couldn't just do that automatically in the residential zoning. He would have to come to the Board of Zoning Appeals to get a variance approval of that. In the agricultural district, he would be able to do that without additional approvals.
So he can't build a church right now there? But he could build a church there with this agreement?
I believe that would be correct. Yeah, the, there's uses in the agricultural district that are permitted that are not permitted in the residential. On the other side, there's some things in the residential that are not permitted in the agricultural.
Okay. That's why we're against this, because with this agreement, all kinds of things can happen in our neighborhood. I mean, somebody that says they're going to do something can change their mind tomorrow. Or they can sell the property two years from now, and the agreement goes with the property. It doesn't change. So somebody can come in there and do anything they want, and we can't have anything to do to stop it.
Anything they want within that zoning.
Right. Right. So that's why we're against it, and a lot of people are against it, because we want to keep our neighborhood residential, because that's the way it always has been. And most of us have lived there for many, many years. And with this agreement, you can do all kinds of things. You can change your mind about what you're doing now and decide to do something tomorrow, and they don't even have to come and see you. They can just do it because it's already in here. So that's why we're against it.
Thank you. Anyone else? We want more than you, and we can wrap it up. Change your mind.
My name is Twi LaRong, and I live at 341 North Vernon Avenue. As my husband said, we have been there 28 years, and when we first looked at the home, the realtor said, "Oh, you know, it's a great neighborhood, single-family residential." That is actually a selling point for a piece of property. But I, I have a problem with if he would want to do a campgrounds there. I think that that's going to devalue our property. I don't know that he's going to, but I don't know that he's not going to. Like Jerry says, he can change his mind and do anything. But there was something I want clarification on there. You said that the property is currently being used as agricultural, but if it would, if there would be an interruption of that, then it would not be able to go back to doing that, because the previous owners, they had animals there. They had the donkeys and the horses. But then they got rid of all of those. They took them to Florida and then Rose passed, and so there was no agricultural going on there from the time Rose passed until this gentleman moved in. So there was an interruption of the agricultural use of the property because there wasn't, you know, after Rose passed. So how can he, why is he doing agricultural now? How is he allowed to do that now?
I believe the rule on that is it's two years. The property has to...
It has to be fallow or vacant for two years before they...
Yes.
Okay, I see. But also, and this is, you know, not mine, but I would hope that if it were my property, that the neighbors would also agree. As Fred said, he is right on top of that property, and I know in the agricultural thing that we printed out, it clearly says right at the top of the page that agricultural district is for open spaces. We don't have that on North Vernon. You know, his property, boom, split rail fence is the only thing that separates his property from his neighbor's property. And as Rita had mentioned, she doesn't have a problem with the animals that are there now. Well, he has block sheep there, and she hasn't heard them. That was funny, because my husband and I were out front today putting up an arch, and I was like, "Oh, Jerry, Jerry, what I hear?" And he's like, "What, what?" I'm like, "I hear the sheep across the way." I did not grow up on a farm. I did not buy in an area where I thought there would be farm animals, because that's not really what I was looking for, and I've been there 28 years. So I really wasn't looking to have a herd of sheep over there. But above and beyond that, he can get even more animals. And for Fred, who lives right on top of that property, not just, you know, I really don't want all the noise and the flies and the stench either, but for Fred, it's even more horrendous. The more animals he packs in there, is there some type of limit to how many animals he can put there? I mean, and also, you're saying that he can have, he can go ahead and throw up a barn here, and if I remember right, when I looked at those papers, it says you can do unlimited buildings. Is that correct? I think that's what it says in the paper for agricultural district. You can have unlimited buildings. For the people that back that property, look out and just see a bunch of barns and things where now they see, you know, at least they see the trees and the green space and things, but to be able to look out and just, you know, see a bunch of old buildings and things back there, I mean, I just, we're people who bought our homes there a long time ago, and these are not the changes that we would like to see. Without a doubt, a campgrounds or a rifle range or anything like that's going to devalue all of our property, and I just, I think it's a sad thing that you want to come in and do this, you know, when we have lived there for 28 years, and, you know, the other neighbor, Patty, she's been there longer than me. I'd say she's probably been there 45 years, and she doesn't want this either. So I mean, I, it would be nice if there were some type of limit on the animals, some way to limit how many buildings and things he could put up if you are, you know, intending to pass this so that our neighbor, you know, a way to stop a campgrounds or things like that going in, that's definitely going to take a toll on the value of our property. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. I'm gonna let you go last. Ma'am?
Also, we did, I and the other one got names on the tissue, and that would be me. And these were the people on our street who also felt that it would devalue their property to have potential campgrounds and things like that there, and so...
Thank you. Chester Brown.
Good evening. Steve Brown, 66 North Vernon Avenue. I was born on a farm. I've had sheep and done all this kind of stuff. The problem is, right now, I see, just like this lady was talking about, I think you're opening the door a little bit. I don't think that anybody's got a, doesn't sound to me like anybody's got a problem with a few sheep or a couple horses or whatever. But if I'm right about the zoning, a year from now, these folks could build a hog barn back there and, under the agricultural zoning. I don't think anybody wants a big hog barn. I understand both sides of the situation. I think these folks bought this place. It's a nice place. They'd like to utilize the backside of it. He's got, wants to file for the CAUV. I understand that, too. But I think that you have to consider everybody in this whole thing, and like I say, I almost think that you're opening the door here for a lot of, a lot of things that would be a lot more unpleasant, and a few sheep or a couple horses or something like that. You know, whether that's going to happen or not, we don't know. I'm down at the other end. It's not going to bother me too much either way, but I understand the circumstances here. We all bought what we did, you know, because of the residential area and things like that. So there's just two sides of this to understand, and I think a hog barn is a good example, if I'm right, looking at, looking at your zoning, at what you could put in. And when I say a hog barn, I'm talking about, you know, 50 or 100 sow's. I don't think you could, I don't know whether you could stop that or not. I don't know. But I guess it's in, within your realm to understand what the circumstances could be or what they are right now at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sir?
I guess I first wanted to say the, I'm sorry, it's Gabriel Yance, 320 North Vernon Avenue. And some of the folks I talked to, Millie, has lived there for 43 years. Sounds like some people are thinking that this was residential, and now we're asking it to be agricultural. It's always been agricultural, that property prior to coming into Newark City limits. It's had animals on it a long time. I hear a lot of concerns about buildings and stuff going up, and I think probably part of what people don't realize is there's no way you can put more buildings back there. There's a 100-foot right-of-way all the way through the middle of that property. You cannot build there. There's transmission lines that go through. There's also a Newark City water line that goes through that property that's also 15 feet. So it'd be impossible for somebody to erect any type of buildings there. The lower part of the property is also in flood, a flood plain. So you couldn't put a campground in. You couldn't put it, whether it's me or anybody else living there, they're going to be restricted by right-of-ways that are already existing and a flood plain that is there. The two parcels set outside of the neighborhood, if you look at the lots, this is all behind the lots. It's not beside anybody. It's behind everybody, and it goes clear across to the other side of Dry Creek. We're talking about almost 15 acres here that sits outside of residential neighborhood. The zoning right next to it, like I said, it's being farmed right now, but the neighbors may not know, and it's zoned as general construction. They could put a lot in there. I've read through all that. There's a variety of, you know, development thing that it's zoned next door for already. But our biggest reason for changing the property and asking for the request goes back to the development piece. If we ceased agriculture, which you have some plans at some point to do some traveling, and then we wanted to come back and regain that, you know, for outside of those two years, then we would not be able to do that. The other part is the market value of that property, and so if you lost the two years on that property and you're looking at almost 16 acres of land that you wouldn't be able to do a small farm on, that's going to greatly impact, you know, the market value of that property, because here you've got a bunch of land that has to be mowed or brush hogged or maintained, and we're talking, you know, several acres, not just a big yard. We're talking almost 16 acres. That would be greatly impacted with that taking place. And so that's something that we're looking at. We're also looking at the taxes, you know, that come along with that, with that piece of property. And so when the service director and the other folks came out, we walked around, we looked at that, we talked about the right-of-ways. Even within your own zoning in the city of Newark, it says a small farm, and that's defined in the ordinance. And so I know some people are talking about the potential of a large farm. That's already dealt with in the current ordinance under AD. It's in the very first paragraph. It has to be small. When I talked to, I believe it was David, about that, he said there is a limit, you know, on how, what's considered a small farm and how much animals you can put on there. So those are already in place with agriculture in the city of Newark. I know there's several districts within Newark. When I looked at the map, that already have agriculture. There's a lot of urban farming going on in Newark. I know Newark has the farmers' market as well, and I think that this property very well fits what the ordinance was put in place there for that. So I appreciate your time in hearing this today. Thank you.
Thank you. One more.
Joe Lombardo, 351 North Vernon Avenue, again. Well, evidently, his biggest worry is about paying taxes.
Joe, talk to me.
I'm sorry. His biggest worry is about paying taxes and what's going to happen to his property in a couple of years, but what about all ours? What's going to happen to it? You're talking about one property against, I don't know how many is on that road, 40, 50, whatever. You know, I don't want my property to go down, and I guarantee you, if you pass this thing, like Mr. Brown said, he could do anything back there, you know?
That's all I'd say.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to go ahead and close this public hearing. Autumn, would you please read 16-33 for a second time?
Ordinance 16-33 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marney, and Mr. Johnson. An ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 320 North Vernon Avenue, City of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, from that of single-family residence, RL, low-density zoning district to AD agricultural zoning district.
You've heard the second reading of 16-33. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff?
Make a motion to adopt 16-33.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Raff.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fraser. Is there a discussion on 16-33?
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff?
Make a motion to amend 16-33.
Motion by Mr. Raff to amend 16-33. What's your amendment, Mr. Raff?
I would like for the amendment to read as is parcel number one at 320 North Vernon remains single-family residential low-density district without any changes. Parcel number two and parcel number three shall be changed as requested and established as AD agricultural district.
Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fraser. Second by Mr. Frazier. Any discussion on the amendment?
Just a point of clarification.
Mr. Frazier?
Is this to align it with the recommendations of the planning commission?
It is. That is based off, that amendment is based off of the recommendation from the planning commission. Thank you.
Anyone else? Autumn, please call the roll to amend 16-33.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
And Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
16-33 has been amended. Is there any discussion on 16-33 as amended now?
Mr. President.
Mr. Rath?
I would like to hear the, uh, opinions of the service director, addresses some of these issues. If it's all right?
Sure. Mr. Rhodes?
If I could, direct, if I could just direct you, we've had some comments from people, both for and opposed. You've heard the reasoning of both. Uh, the property owners has, uh, discussed a right-of-way going down the middle as well as the water line and created a floodplain, making it not possible to build on that property. If you could comment on those and also comment maybe briefly on the definition of a small farm.
Uh, first of all, I'd like to say that in, in Newark, uh, the zoning has a process. If people come in, they file, uh, to, for change of zoning, it's not something the administration seeks out. Comes to council, it comes to planning commission. Planning commission, we have a public hearing, and at that time, we take, uh, we, we don't make any comments, we ask a few questions, we don't give an opinion. Then what we do is we go out and we look at the site. In this particular case, it was myself, the engineer, and Nate, the zoning. We all went out, we looked at it, we, we walked the property. The first thing that I thought when I came down North Vernon, this, gosh, it's all houses. We gotta make sure that the house remains residential, because it is a residential street as you come through there. It truly is. And then when you go in the rear of the property, you know, it's farmland, that's what it is. And there are easements. And there is, you walk down a green hill, it is in a hundred-year floodplain. Could they build a building back there? I'd really have to look at it, look at the easements to comment on that. If you're asking me a definition of a small farm, I would probably yield a little bit more to the zoning, Nate, but in my opinion, what they have there now is a small farm. And it does match other land that's in the rear that lines up with the church and the other farm that's back there. So, and the zoning things aren't, uh, aren't easy. We, we took a look at it, we walked the property, three of us did. We put our heads together, we looked at it, and the first thing we wanted to do is preserve the residential area on North Vernon by making sure that first parcel remains residential. But in the rear of it, seems to be a reasonable request for it to go to agriculture.
Mr. Rath? Without including the specifics, there's, the definition, the legal definition of a small farm, does that limit the amount of livestock or the number of acres that you could plant?
Okay. Again, I'd have to defer back to...
I, I'm not asking for specific numbers, but, you know...
I don't know that, I'll comment.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Mr. Frazier, ask him a question, and we'll come back to you.
So...
I'm done, but, okay, fine.
Mr. Frazier?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, as far as access to that location, is there appropriate access in order for them to knock over their people's yard?
There, there is, if, if you go down North Vernon, uh, if you're, if you're headed, uh, on North Vernon where the curve goes, you know, kind of the church is on the end, there is an access road there, whether that's his road or somebody else's property, I would have to look at a plat map. But there, there is a roadway back there that allows them to get back to the property, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you.
Mr. Frazier, anything else?
I'm good. Any other comments?
Uh, probably like to have the, uh, hear the opinion of Mr. Marmee, if you can just warn.
Mr. Marmee, you have any comment?
Sure. What appears to be happening here is somebody is trying to make sure that the law and the current zoning matches what is actually happening. It's kind of amazing because, um, I, I've heard comments such as, well, who wants a farm across the street or next to them? Well, I have one right across the street from my house, and they actually were attempting, they, they re-zoned it residential and so it could be developed, and the neighbors were actually upset about it. So, you, you always are going to get these conflicting notions. The, the people in our neighborhood said, well, if they build houses on that farm, then it's going to diminish our property values. Where here, we're hearing, well, if they keep, if they make it a farm, then it's going to diminish property values. The property owner can do as he's doing now and operate it as a farm because it has been grandfathered in, and the property owner is trying to do what we in the city like being done, is just making sure we don't have all these non-conforming uses and that we actually have it zoned properly. All the land around the back portion, which is what now is, is proposed as being which portion of the, of the parcels are going to be agricultural, all around that is surrounded by agricultural. If the church decided tomorrow to build a building where the beans are planted every year, they could do so. We, I hear things about, well, what if they put up a church? Well, there's a church 100 yards from there. So, what would two churches be different than one church? I'm not seeing a compelling evidence as the reason why we would not allow the agricultural in the area in which we are, and also, I, I think the planning commission did a great job of saying, but leave the house residential, because that's the way it's being utilized. If something does occur, like Mr. Ans said about it goes back to where it can't be utilized as a farm because it's been two years, now all of a sudden, we have a piece of, two parcels that will no longer qualify for CAUV. So, that means the taxes will more than quadruple on those two parcels. The only way for a property owner to recoup that kind of increase in taxes is to put some other type of use on there. With that amount of acreage, um, and the limited amount of building that can occur in a floodplain or something, probably anybody as wise might say, well, best thing might be apartments or something, and try to go that direction. So, you know, we can say, well, what if they do this in the future? Well, if we don't change it, what if they do this? What if they put apartments back there? Are you going to like that? What if they, they make it a residential and they, they really put in an actual mobile home park? If it's zoned residential back there? And they put a road back there? There's all kinds of things that we can say, what if? What we have to do is look at the Ohio revise code and say, property owner writes, is he doing what should be done, and is it something that is, that is contiguous with what is currently there? And we talk about that consistently with all of the zoning changes that are in, in front of us. You know, we did that with the 21st Street property. We do it with the, with the CVS property, and, and we try to say, does agricultural and residential being side by side, does that create a nuisance or a hardship? And really, I don't see that. I mean, how many farms are in the city of Newark and they're right next to residential properties? You go out into my neck of the woods and, and into my ward, almost every residential property butts right up against agricultural, whether it's in the city or outside of the city limits, and there's a combination of both of those. At one point, the entire area was agricultural. When I grew up out there, there was no houses on North Vernon. And I grew up right there, Sherwood Downs right out there. And that was all, even where I grew up used to be farmland. So, I, I think that if we, if we say that it can't be done or it shouldn't be done, he can still continue to do it, and all that's going to do is cause him to try to make sure that, or whoever the property owner is, to make sure that it stays that way. And, you know, what's going to happen, what, what is a property owner going to do to make sure that they continue to get that CAUV? And, and I'm just going to use it as an example, he decides to travel for a few years abroad. Well, he's going to make sure farming stays there, but how's he going to do it? We don't know. Is that what we're going to want? Because he wanted to sublease it to somebody else who may not be as good of a neighbor as he is because he's residing there? These are all things that we can talk about a lot of what is, but I, I guess my bottom line is, it's being utilized as that currently, it has been, it's been grandfathered in at the request of the property owner. He just wants to make it a permanent thing to do what he has been, that property has been doing for years. So, I'm in full support of, of changing the zoning classification as the planning commission modified it. And I think it was a great compromise to leave the house as residential and then the other two parcels as agricultural.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee. Anyone? Ms. Hall?
Um, it seems like if they're in the city already, um, wouldn't there be a, a certain number of animals that they could have? And then if it goes agricultural, it can be a hog farm or chicken farm or, I mean, who could answer?
I, I don't have the answer to that.
There's, Mr. President.
Mr. Marmee.
There are other guidelines that are outside of our guidelines dealing with agriculture. You have to have so many acres per head of cattle, and I think it's a state of Ohio requirement, it's not even a local requirement. But I guarantee you that there was someone 200 yards from my house that had 15 chickens in a coop behind their house, and they were fine, the city was fine with that. It's, uh, it, there are urban farmers as it was indicated, but you also have to conform with the state of Ohio, and, and it's almost like a animal rights type of a thing. You don't want to have 100 head of cattle on nine acres because they're going to die. Some of them are going to die. So, the state of Ohio limits some of that through the Department of Agriculture.
Thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Hall?
No, I'd say, thank you.
Any other discussion on 16-33 as amended? Mr. Cos?
It, it seems as if the, the change that the planning commission has asked for is helping, in my opinion, to reduce the impact as far as the other residential properties. I, I would not have been in favor at all of having the property be totally agricultural, but by, by keeping the, where your house is, making it residential, I, I agree, Mr. Marmee, that that, that's a reasonable compromise, and I think it lessens the impact on, on your neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Cos. Anyone else? Autumn, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
And Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
16-33 as amended passes 9 to 1. Okay. Next, we move on. You guys like to stay, you're welcome to. If not, we'll give you a second. Okay, next on the agenda, we have comments from citizens. There are two places for citizens' comments, one is now and one is after the legislation. This is not a debate with council, this is just your opportunity to be heard. Do we have anyone for this first section of citizens' comments? Okay. We'll move on to ordinances on the second reading, 16-42.
Ordinance 16-42 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Rath. An ordinance vacating portions of alleys as shown on the plot of Charles Miller's addition as reported in Plot Book 2, page 129 of Lincoln County Plot Records. Said alleys are located between 226 and 232 East Main Street.
You've heard the second reading of 16-42. What does your wish?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Floyd?
Move to adopt 16-42.
Motion by Mrs. Floyd?
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Is there any discussion on 16-42? Mrs. Floyd?
There's no opposition at all, so...
Anyone else? Autumn, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
And Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
16-42 passes 10-0. Next on the second reading, we have 16-44.
Ordinance 16-44 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Rath. An ordinance amending the position classification, pay range, and department authorization tables of Lincoln County Municipal Clerk of Courts by changing the number of deputy clerks and setting compensation therefor.
You've heard the second reading of 16-44. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Buck?
I'll move to adopt ordinance 16-44.
Motion by Mr. Buck?
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 16-44? Seeing none, Autumn, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
And Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
16-44 passes 10-0. Next on the second reading, we have 16-45.
Ordinance 16-45 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Rath, and Mr. Johnson. An ordinance waiving the statutory residency requirement for the Director of Public Safety and improving maintenance of a residence outside of the city limits of Newark, Ohio.
You've heard the second reading of 16-45. What does your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Buck?
I'll move to adopt 16-45, second.
Motion by Mr. Buck?
Second.
By Mr. Cos? Is there any discussion on 16-45? Seeing none, Autumn, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
And Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
16-45 passes 10-0. Now, we go to ordinances on the first reading.
Ordinance 16-46?
16-46.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. By Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Raff, and Mr. Johnson, and ordinance amending section 890.051 of chapter 890 of the codified ordinances for the city of Newark, Ohio regarding the levy and collection of municipal income taxes.
16-46 will be held for a second reading. Now we go to resolutions on the second reading, 16-91.
Resolution 16-91 by Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Raff, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
You've heard the second reading of 16-91. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy?
Make a motion to adopt resolution 16-91.
Motion by Mr. Marmy?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 16-91? Seeing none, honorable, please call the roll vote.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
And Mr. Ralata?
Yes.
16-91 passes 10-0. Next on the second reading, 16-93.
Resolution 16-93 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, and Mr. Johnson, a resolution supporting the Ohio Department of Transportation for the designation of state and U.S. bicycle routes crossing Ohio, including the U.S. Bike Route 50 and State Bike Route 65 in the city of Newark.
You've heard the second reading of 16-93. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff?
Make a motion to adopt 16-93.
Motion. Motion by Mr. Raff, second by Mr. Frazier. Any discussion on 16-93? Seeing none, honorable, please call-
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff, Mr. Frazier. Who is that? Mr. Frazier?
I'm excited to have a U.S. Bike Group and the State Bike Routes that come through the city of Newark, Ohio. There's a concern that I have is just the funding associated with it, where the state is giving us signs, but they're not allocating the funds to designate standalone paths in which bikers go through downtown Newark, Ohio. So, I applaud the idea and I support it, but I also think that the state of Ohio should also put forward some money and effort in order to make our bikeways safer in the city of Newark, Ohio, and support these bike routes that were approved the night we passed.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Anyone else? Honorable, please call the roll vote.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
And Mr. Ralata?
Yes.
16-93 passes 10-0. And next on the second reading, we have 16-94.
Resolution 16-94 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, a resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service to advertise for bids and enter into contract for certain essential supplies for various departments of the city of Newark, Ohio for 2017.
You've heard the second reading of 16-94. What is your wish?
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Johnson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier? Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any discussion on 16-94 while we wake up Mr. Raff? Seeing none, honorable, please call the roll vote.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
And Mr. Ralata?
Yes.
16-94 passes 10-0. Now we move to resolutions on the first reading, 16-95.
Resolution 16-95 by Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Raff, and Mr. Johnson, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
16, Mr. Marmy?
Yes, we need to make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on resolution 16-95.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Marmy?
Yes, we have some disbursements as far as payouts for employees, and also, we have some other bills. It's getting near the end of the year, we have to pay those right away, so we wanna make sure we get those taken care of.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. Honorable, please call the roll to waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
And Mr. Ralata?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived, Mr. Marmy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Make a motion to adopt resolution 16-95.
Motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd. Any other discussion on 16-95? Honorable, please call the roll vote.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
And Mr. Ralata?
Yes.
16-95 passes 10-0. Next on the first reading, we have 16-96.
Resolution 16-96 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Raff, and Mr. Johnson, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
16-96 will be held for two weeks for a second reading. And then finally this evening, we have 16-97.
Resolution 16-97 by Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Raff, and Mr. Johnson, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
And 16-97 will also be held for two weeks. And that concludes our legislation this evening. Thank you for your patience. Next on the agenda, we have comments from citizens. That's the second opportunity for comments this evening. Again, this is not a debate with council, this is just your opportunity to be heard. Do we have anyone? Seeing none, anyone from the administration this evening? Honorable, all directors.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Sassen. Mr. Blake?
Thank you, Mr. President. Pass.
Thank you, Mr. Blake, Mr. Bub?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to remind everybody, this Friday evening, Christmas lighting downtown Canal Market District. It'll be a little bit different than years past, it won't be the courthouse, obviously, this year, but it'll be a nice event, it's gonna be a nice fireworks show. Happy CLT Radio is gracious enough to make that a nice contribution to make the fireworks show happen as well downtown, so I'd like to thank Doug Price for that, and hope to see everybody down there. Wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Mr. Baum, wish you the best, always a blast council meeting to congratulate you, but congratulate you and wish you the best. I hope that you'll do a good job, so. But that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do you know the time on that?
Well, music, and it's around 5:30 when that gets a start, but there's also kind of the Christmas kind of festival that's gonna be starting in the afternoon, so there will be events all, you know, basically, I don't wanna say mid-afternoon, but I'm gonna say like, you know, 2, 3 o'clock, you know, down there all through the evening.
Like the courthouse fireworks around 7-ish or something?
Yes. But music will be, yeah, before that, and Sam will be there, a little bit before 7.
Thank you. Everybody will be happy about that. Mr. Cost? Thank you, Mr. President. I'll pass. Thank you, Mr. Cost. Mrs. Floyd?
It's very exciting to see Route 16 opening and Jerry Valley and Light gone, and tomorrow, they finish up the street out here and around the, on Third Street, and that'll be open on Wednesday. It's nice to see all those orange barrels gone. I'll be glad when the fence in front of my house is gone too, but that will come soon enough, I hope. Reminder that in addition to all the events that are happening Friday, that Saturday is Small Business Saturday. We've got a lot of small businesses in Newark, including several new ones that hopefully some people will go through and purchase something. As I do every year, I would like to encourage you to go to the Midland this weekend and see the Nutcracker. It's very well done for a local production. Most of the dancers are local, there are a few that come from Columbus, but it's a very good show, and there are shows Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, so hopefully some of you can attend. And happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd.